Okay, I think everybody is here, so I'm gonna call this workshop together. And I'm gonna let everybody get a chance to get to their assigned locations. And we're gonna have a workshop today regarding the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update by KTUA. I want to say KTLA. If that's any accurate. We'll note that all council members are present. All five members are present. And I'm going to allow you to proceed. Go ahead, it's all yours.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and council members and city manager. Thank you so much for having me again today to present to you all an update to the Montclair Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I have with me Nicole also, who has been assisting me with all parts of this project. So for this evening, I'm going to present to those that I may have missed a couple of weeks ago at the last public workshop, some of the information that sets the stage for some of the recommendations that you'll see. Today's conversation is mainly focused on the infrastructure-based recommendations that will be going into the master plan report. And a reminder that nothing is set in stone. This is meant to be based on our observations and our analysis. And I'm really looking forward to the open discussion and the ideas that will come from this group here so that we can keep marching forward to get the final master plan in your hands within the next month or month and a half. So I'll go ahead and just jump right into it. There we go. Thank you so much. Appreciate the help, thank you. So reminder that this is really meant to be a comprehensive plan, as you've heard before, to really create hopefully a sustainable master plan that's gonna help guide you for the next five, 10, 15 years when it comes to parks and recreation planning here for the city. We find ourselves closer to step four now. We're really trying to get going on the master plan report that essentially consolidates everything that we've been working on for the past year. And so the existing conditions overview is what we're about to see. This really again is about setting the stage, trying to fully understand your city as it relates to your parks. And so the 15 parks that are either co-managed or owned specifically from the city are all analyzed. We total up the acres to really understand how many acres we have, but how are they distributed throughout the city itself? This table is an important table because it gives us a numerical understanding of how the city is doing as it relates to the population. There are guidelines when it comes to parks and rec planning about how many parks you should have, how many acres you should have for your community. So the big takeaway from this table is based on your goal of having five acres for every 1,000 residents. When you do all the math and you combine with how many acres you currently have, the data shows that there is a deficit of about 140 acres. Don't be alarmed, this is very typical. A lot of Southern California cities are in large deficits, as you see here. So this is something, again, it's a goal, right? How can we start remedying some of this? The next table is equally as important because it's trying to show you if you don't do anything, if you don't add additional parks in throughout your city, and your population grows as it's expected to grow through SCAG data information. In 2045, when your population goes up to approximately 50,000 people, your deficit increases, right? If you don't do anything. So a complicated way, but simply trying to show you that there are goals in mind when it comes to trying to find additional parks or opportunities or partnerships to better serve your community. These maps are a great way to communicate how your parks are serving your community geographically. The blue outline, that swiggly polygon that you see throughout the city, that is representing a half-mile distance from each of the parks, okay? And so what's also even more important, in our opinion, we always overlay your residential land use with these analyses to understand, okay, where do the people live? And how is that compared to your parks? And so it kind of paints a different picture when it comes to either gaps or no gaps within a city. And so additionally, based on park inventory and based on just conversations about what the city may offer, we do a set of analysis that is specific to amenities within a park or facilities. So this trio is a very common thing that we do for all of our park and rec master plans because they're the big three: playgrounds, courts, and sports fields. And what you're seeing is slightly different picture, right? Because not every park can serve all the same needs based on space or funding or just it doesn't exist there. But what you're seeing here is how a park with a specific amenity can be serving your city a little bit differently. So playgrounds, you have a good coverage around the center of your city. Same thing with court sports. And even less coverage with sports fields, which makes sense. Sports fields take up a lot of room within a park. So most often than not, cities have less of it there. And again, gaps that exist in the city of Montclair are something that allows my team to focus on certain recommendations related to goals and those sorts of things. We've done outreach throughout the past year. We had an opportunity to attend several pop-ups. So thank you for allowing us to be there and get to know your community and participate on some of these really fun events that are thrown essentially by your community services department. So again, it was a great opportunity to pass out surveys, have maps, and let the community provide feedback on parks and recreation facilities. Two slides related to the survey that I think shed some light. So the question about which one needs more improvements or additional amenities. You know, the ones in red are the top five parks that people voted on that they'd like to see more improvements on: Alma Hoffman, Kingsley, Modena Vista, Saratoga, and Sunset Park. Another important question is, if you would like to see amenities added to the parks, what would that be? Once again, the red are the top five results: trails, exercise equipment, dog parks, picnic tables, playgrounds. And under the other category, we had an opportunity for people to fill in their thing, and lighting, restrooms, water fountains, benches, shade, and general maintenance rounded off the most common things we heard in the open comment section. Now, recommendations. So these three things right here kind of start painting a picture. The first set of bullets represent the things that the city is currently meeting based on guidelines that we see across the country and in California. So this civic center that you have here, all of the recreation use senior center, that's great. You're already serving based on your population. You're meeting those needs. So this campus that we're on is a great thing that the city has. But things like skate parks, your splash pad, community gardens, again, based on population, you're hitting the mark. So that's positive. Now, when it comes to amenities that are currently lacking based on nationwide guidelines or park standards, things like playgrounds, sport courts, rectangular fields like for soccer, diamond fields for softball and baseball, and dog parks, those were like the top things that we noticed that based on what you're lacking. These are things we may want to focus on as they relate to recommendations. And from the survey, again, things like walking paths, picnic tables, dog parks, playgrounds, aquatic facilities like your splash pad are the things that we could try to focus on in terms of recommendations. So what we did at the workshop and what you'll be seeing in the master plan report as well are sets of maps and tables like this, right? Identifying opportunity areas for what we call park infill opportunities. So like your park at Modena Vista, you could have a lot of just grass with nothing on it. And so as planners and designers, we usually try to identify different shapes or areas within these opportunity areas to figure out, okay, when funding becomes available, what could you add here that is currently missing that could help meet some of those needs in your community? So we had these tables and these maps at the workshop. And again, Nicole and I will be editing them for the report. But it's an easy way to quickly identify opportunity areas. And this is really useful for your staff here as they are planning things out for grants and those sorts of things. We wanted to do, though, a hypothetical scenario for you. So these next couple of slides is showing you how things can be better in Montclair if you were to add certain facilities and amenities throughout your park. So here's a quick reminder. The map right there that you see are the existing playgrounds in Montclair. And if we were to add playgrounds in some of the other parks that don't have, you'll see that the blue outlines increase. So like, for example, adding a playground at Modena Vista, adding a playground down south. I forget that park escapes me. But as you can see, those sorts of things can start, you can visually see how they're reaching more of your community. Oops, excuse me, pushed a button, accident. There we go. And we did the same exercise for the remaining things like your sports courts and your fields. Here are your existing court sports. And again, these are just hypothetical scenarios. Just you can see the benefits and the improvements in the city. You could, again, reach more of your community. And same thing with fields. This is a little harder, right? Because fields, whether they're youth soccer or full soccer or lacrosse or diamond fields, those take up a lot of room. And a lot of cities don't have parks that can take all those things. But depending on what the facility is, you could make some improvements in the city. So again, these are hypothetical, and we'll refine these maps for the master plan report based on today's conversation, based on the feedback that we collected from the community. Other recommendations. And I was so excited to learn all about the San Antonio Creek Trail and the benefits that it can provide once you start building and phasing this really important project. So we took the acreage, we talked about maybe what kind of amenities that could be included, and we did the same analysis, just trying to see how far it could reach your community. And it does fill in a lot, a big gap on the west side of the city. In addition, thinking big, right? Trying to understand what are other opportunity areas within the city. So we looked at your detention basin, understanding that this is an opportunity that many other cities across California, Southern California have been thinking about playing with and trying to understand if you were to maybe do like a simple walking path with exercise equipment or maybe native gardens along with the walking path, you could be serving passive recreation needs or linear recreation needs for the community in northwest Montclair. So again, hypothetical situation, these are potential park acreages that can all start adding up little by little. And just some examples here, right? Of us being inspired and hopefully you all being inspired of how the San Antonio Creek Trail and the things like the detention basins, how they could serve the community with some great examples here in Southern California. Now, when it comes to new park opportunities, this is very important, especially when it comes to grants and those sorts of things. People up at the state and at the federal level love to see new park areas being added within a city. So in coordination with Public Works and Planning Department, we've identified ongoing projects that your city is working on. So we've identified those for the master plan, and we've identified the acreages associated with them as well. And so these are the seven park areas that will be in the master plan report, still draft pending based on any conversation we have. In addition to that, joint use agreements with your schools. So understanding that partnerships, agreements with your school district, whether it's a school that has a field, a school that may have a playground, those are very common ways to go into, again, some agreements. And we know historically, the city of Montclair has had these in the past. We have a couple of them currently right now. But we specifically identified Montevista and Montero Elementary School because they would, in a hypothetical situation, serve a gap within this part of Montclair, this central southern portion of the city. And we actually, we've stopped by, we've kind of looked at the facilities, the fields. And it seems like with partnerships and agreements, it could be something that we would encourage you all to explore in the near future. Now, this last set of maps is really how we start combining all of this. The blue is the existing travel sheds, right? The geographic distribution of your existing park. The green outline, those are if you were to take all the things you just saw, the new opportunity areas, and when you combine it, you really start getting much, much more coverage. And when you add that with the residential, you've almost completely covered your residential land use area in some form or another, right? When it comes to access to a park space within the city of Montclair. So this is good news. You have a little bit of a gap right in the center part of southern Montclair. But all the new park opportunities really do help fill some of those missing things there. And if you were to take your 2045 population, and when we add the new park opportunity areas, we do see your deficit going down a little bit, going from needing approximately 200 acres to needing only 175. So any bump in that is good news. So this is, again, if everything were to be implemented over the future. So lastly, I just want to quickly mention that we have a subconsultant on our team as well, and they're working through the programming, staff, and financial recommendations. They're currently working through those things right now, and those will be included, parts of it, into the master plan. A lot of it is behind-the-scenes information, right? That is important to your community services department and Public Works. But understanding programming and recreation is absolutely critical to a healthy, sustainable parks and rec system. So we've looked at what was historically offered, like these things that you see on your screen, and trying to understand where there could be some deficits as they relate to recreation programming. So they've given us a high-level list of things, things like expanding your teen and adult sports when staffing becomes available. Because we all know very well how staffing is still a very big issue when it comes to trying to implement some of these things. Providing adaptive or therapeutic programming for special needs is something that the city doesn't offer. And again, that's just one thing that was very obvious to our team members that exploring this would be a big benefit because it currently is not being offered. And then expanding cultural programming for certain different demographics within a city. So a lot of the big festivals that take place throughout Southern California that could be geared towards one group or another where obviously everybody's welcome, but just expanding on those things could be a really great way to tap into your diverse community here. And lastly, we cannot escape the fact that we are living in a digital world, and a lot of parks and recreation departments are very much embracing the online side of socialization or getting together. We see cities doing like big e-game competitions at community centers where literally you fill up a whole room and you're seeing somebody compete online, right? So it's a different way of socialization and recreation, but it is trending, and it's something that we would encourage the city to explore. And then lastly, those partnerships, like I mentioned earlier, those joint use agreements, partnerships with Chino Water Basin District and those sorts of things, your YMCA. These are all important things that many cities do, and we would encourage you all to explore that. So real quick, we had a really great workshop a couple of weeks ago. We had about 30 people show up. I presented essentially all of this to your community. And then we had an open house. So really happy with the turnout in spite of the rain that was taking place that day. So very happy about those people who came out to visit us. And so we had comments on boards and everything you just heard. On the recreation program boards, we did see support on sticky notes about cultural programs, performing arts, and supporting those therapeutic programs. General comments that we saw on some of our maps included dog parks, walking trails, soccer fields, and more and cleaner restrooms. Some general comments included promoting to your community that there is a native garden that is there at your fantastic wilderness park. So just more like education and awareness about that resource for your community. And then, again, those representatives from the Chino Basin Water District, they're letting us know that they are planning to add a nature playground. And again, just creating awareness and letting everybody know that that's to come. So really happy to hear about that. Those maps that I mentioned earlier, again, we had your community members add stickers next to the park amenity or facility that they'd like to see. And so there was an opportunity for them to comment on this, on eight of the parks that have opportunity areas. And the one example I'll show you in this presentation is for Modena Vista Park just because of how much open grass there is. So it was an easy one for your community to essentially pick on and kind of be like, okay, what can we do at Modena Vista Park? And so there are general comments, like you see there are lots of sports courts related, and maybe things about revenue-generating facilities, field rentals. This specific park, based on the stickers, things like dog park picnic areas, exercise equipment, splash pad and playground, received the top votes. So this is a very important exercise for us because it's based on the community, and it allows Nicole and myself to rerun that analysis, the future scenario, so you can kind of see a more holistic picture based on your community and council feedback. So to conclude this presentation, it's really about the open dialogue, the things to consider, right? That kind of need that top-down approach, support from a group of council members or commissioners, to make some of these things more of a reality. So that topic on school joint use agreements, the topic about the detention basins, the future park sites, and then any other ongoing thing. So again, I'm here to, I think I have two more slides. These are just, again, the conversation topics to have today with you all. But it's really gonna allow us to wrap up essentially this draft report. We're gonna summarize the feedback. We're going to be putting together a report that will be circulating internally with your staff, but then a draft will be presented to you. And I think I have one more visit. The last visit will be about that draft report and hopefully adopting it and you having something to work towards. So again, I really want to thank you all for allowing Nicole and myself to be back here. And we're here taking notes, and I think it's all open for discussion now. So thank you, Monica, for the help and having me here.
Oh, great. I have some questions just to make sure I understand all this. So I know you're working on draft reports now based on all the input that came in. One question I have is anything on Saratoga Park? The baseball fields being redone, that whole park? You guys looking at that as well? Is that being worked on?
Yes.
It wasn't a part of the presentation, but that played a big role of us doing this whole exercise.
Yes. No, we're really excited for all the things that are being planned for Saratoga. Because there's so much focus going into that one with the money that's being received, that kind of became secondary and based on some of the other parks that may need more things. But absolutely, Mayor, that is being considered, and it's part of the report. And we're gonna treat it as existing conditions just because of how, in terms of this long timeline of those things that are coming. It doesn't mean that there aren't other opportunity areas. I think Saratoga can still benefit from additional amenities with creative design.
Right, but there's an entire analysis being done about Saratoga. Do we blow it all up, start from scratch, and put this here, put that there? Is that part of the analysis?
No, not to that degree, no. The understanding, and maybe Monica may be able to jump in, but the understanding was that there's money coming to make improvements to the fields and that it was our opportunity to look at other parts that aren't being touched by this grant that could benefit from improvements.
Well, can Dad tell me what we're doing about Saratoga, Jim? Because that is a key thing of this whole thing. Can you explain that, please?
Well, as you know, Mr. Mayor, we did receive a $2 million grant related to Saratoga Park. In addition, the 2021 lease revenue bonds commits additional money to each of the parks. I think Saratoga Park has an additional $2 million allocated to it. We did look at an examination of Saratoga Park several years ago. That was always our intention after this process was completed to see what recommendations came out of that, this process, that we would revive that analysis of Saratoga Park and then merge the two together to come up with final recommendations related to the park specific to the city council. So we didn't want this particular analysis to focus on one park because we already had several components related to that park. We just wanted to see what this analysis would be recommending in addition to our plans already related to the redevelopment of Saratoga Park. So once the final report is submitted and we examine what those recommendations are, we'll merge them together and then come back to the council with a report.
I thought this exercise was part of Saratoga Park, looking at the whole baseball fields and determining if Kingsley and also Vernon, the softball fields and all that, put together was part of this analysis. I guess it's not. Am I correct, Dad?
Not to that degree, yes, you're correct.
Well, I'm a little disappointed because I'm anxious to get Saratoga Park going. And the improvements got going. This is why we started this whole discussion two years ago. And this is all great to have, but I'm disappointed in how slow we are of getting to a product of construction plans and be able to go out there and get it out the bid and start something. So now we're further out. And this is great again, but it's not what I'm expecting. You know, I thought when we started this whole process, when we brought this consultant aboard, this was part of it. And it probably explains why I keep asking the Little League, have you met with the consultant to discuss the improvements in Saratoga Park? And hasn't happened. So I don't know. Who wants to go next? Councilman Rue.
Yes, thank you. I do have some questions on this. One, when we looked at the aggregate amount of park space, did we include in their shared-use fields or all of our school properties that could potentially be shared use?
In the existing conditions analysis, we did not only the ones that currently have the joint use agreements. The recommendations phase, those two schools, those were the new additions that we took into consideration for this analysis. And we located those two schools specifically based on gaps within the travel sheds. But it doesn't mean that if there's another school or idea that is missing that we can take a look at. So it was still open to adding additional schools to analyze within those recommendations.
Because I think when you look at a lot of this, there's a lot of school sites in the city. And we could find ways to share that. That would increase our acreage because there's times they're not even being used. So working with the schools might help, and I'm glad we're in that way. Have we looked at what I call private open space? I'm thinking specifically many of our condo communities, HOAs, things like that. Where those residents may not ever use a park because they have plenty of amenities there. They have playgrounds there in some cases. So those individuals would not be using these. Do we take that into consideration, that there's that type of acreage? And although it's not available to the public, there's an awful lot of people who use it.
For this master plan, that has not been the approach. It's mostly been about the publicly-owned city-owned spaces. It is a very common thing to look at within others. We do that with all of our other parks and rec master plans when requested by the client.
I realize it means that the average public isn't using it, but there's a lot of people who live there. And we would say, well, we need more parks. Well, those individuals may not be using our parks. They're using the space they pay for in their HOA every month. So it would be good to look at that. An issue and something I hear all the time about parks. For all of the positives everybody puts out there, everybody wants a park, except in their neighborhood. They don't. They'll tell you, we want more parks, but please don't put it here. I hear all the time about traffic, things going on in the park, balls going over a wall, noise. They don't like people barbecuing in the few parks where you can barbecue. You know, there's all of that. Do we have any way to judge the attitude on that? Because it's great to say we want a park, but put it in a neighborhood, and then people are always worried about crime in parks. And you can't say, oh, well, we're gonna close the park up at this time because a lot of people want to use it. So do we look at that at all?
Yeah. I'm gonna answer that in two parts because the human element of the kind of urban planning work that we do, right, is always gonna be an X-factor. So that kind of conversation takes place in subsequent phases because you would have to have a very specific park to do targeted outreach for that community. So for example, improvements coming to Saratoga Park, you may want to target the community within a half-mile distance of that so that you can get some of that more emotional feedback from the community and try to determine how much maybe NIMBYism there is with that kind of specific thing. But I would recommend that if there's an opportunity for either a citywide survey or a citywide statistically valid survey, that is a great way to gauge also the reactions, whether it's for a specific park or for the whole city as a whole. But that is a way to, in a way scientifically, more accurately, gauge the temperature with your residents as it relates to this.
Because I know even with our park right here, Alma Hoffman, I hear people complain, there are balls that come over in my yard, I hear this noise. I hear that with every park. And so for everybody who says they want a park, we also need to consider that they want it, but not in their neighborhood. We were talking about grants for parks. That's wonderful. A grant is great. It acquires the land, you put all this nice stuff in, and then guess what? Somebody's gotta pay for the ongoing maintenance, somebody has to pay for the repairs. So grants won't cover all of that. So it's something we have to think about long-term. Will we have the money to support it not five or 10 years from now, 20 or 30 years from now? It's wonderful. We've seen so many examples of grants that fund something. Then you know what? There's no more money, and now what are we going to do? So we need to look at that.
Absolutely.
I won't ask that one. We're looking at, and I saw it here, an aquatics center. I keep hearing that. It's a lot of money. It's a tremendous amount of liability. Is there thought of perhaps instead of having an aquatic center, we work with what's around us? We have a YMCA in Chino and one in Upland with aquatic centers. There is a beautiful swimming pool and swimming facility at Montclair High School, not too far from here. Working with the school district to see if maybe there could be programs we can work with our young people who want aquatics, who need this, but it helps lessen the liability on the tax. it helps lessen the liability on the taxpayers in Montclair.
Yes.
These are very expensive facilities to keep and maintain. There's plenty of facilities around us and maybe it's just sharing, even if it means sharing with a neighboring community and working something out because I think that's the better way to go when I look at the long-term cost to taxpayers. And then the last thing, and this is just my personal view, before we go and build new parks, I think it's better to upgrade what we have and see how you, how, how much they'll be used. In many cases, I mean, that's just my view. In many cases, you can build a brand new park somewhere. Is somebody actually going to use it? You'll hear somebody say, oh, we'll use it. 10 years down the road, their kids are grown, they're gone. Now it's a uh, less youth-centric community and maybe those people aren't using the park. I'm just saying, let's look at all of this before we, we jump forward. Thank you.
I'm gonna, if I may comment on both of them, just because aquatic facilities, pools specifically, that is a big commitment, liability, maintenance, staffing. We're hearing our other clients just telling us they can't hire lifeguards right now. That's like the one thing they're having trouble with. So it, it, it is a struggle and we recognize it because we're seeing that across all our other parks and rec master plans that we're working on. Um, so these partnerships is important. I think that is gonna be one of the final recommendations of exploring opportunities with Ontario Upland, you know, Clermont and trying to see what could be, what could be made possible.
YMCA, boys and girls clubs, things like that.
Yeah.
You know, as far as transportation, that can be worked out.
Yes. And it's, it's all about the relationship building and I try to understand how they could be better if they currently aren't or if they're non-existent. How can you start that? Because the liability thing is the scary thing that a lot of people shy away from. And so, um, it's a shared feeling among, you know, your other colleagues that are in this world of, you know, parks for rec master planning.
Just because I've, I've, I've been through these discussions and something else I do in life and that issue comes up all the time. Thank you.
And park infill opportunities, that is, um, nine out of 10 times the number one priority, right? Those, um, that's the low hanging fruit. Try to improve what you currently either, you know, something that's aging, something that's not performing well within the parks that you have. So that's why that park infill analysis is really important for all of the park master plans that we do. Um, when we did inventory, we also graded the condition of some of the, uh, of the amenities and facilities. So that, that also provides some guidance as to what is fair, poor, good or excellent, right? And so that, there is a little bit of guidance that's being passed on to your public works department uh, about what could be a higher priority item, right? You know, having MacArthur Park with a new playground, like that's great. Um, knowing that Saratoga is gonna get a brand new playground because that one needs some love. That's great. So you're already doing that, which is really great. But a lot of your other parks could benefit from improvements to existing parks.
Improving those first, making best use of them, highest use of them first, before we go off buying and paying for something else. The neighbors are already there. Let's fix those up and make them what, what that community wants.
And your survey.
Let's move on to Councilmember Lopez. He's next. I have a time limit here I have to work with today. So, Councilman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, give me your name again, please.
I'm Jacob.
Jacob, thank you for your time and your presentation. Um, I, um, I, I need to echo the mayor's concern regarding Saratoga. I, I kind of thought we would have more in-depth presentation on what was gonna be done there. It was August, September of 2022 in these chambers where she was here, Norma Torres, herself, presenting us with a sample check of the $2 million we've received. And in that picture in front of this dais, we had the Little, Little League president at the time. Word has been out for seven months amongst families using that field that something is going to be done and the city's gonna redo our field. There's rumors about what's gonna be done in this. And sure, some of it is not, it's just out there landish. It's not, um, quantified or, or backed up, but there's buzz about it. There still is buzz about it. The only thing is now, from what I'm hearing is, why are you guys dragging your feet? You got the money, what's going on? So yes, I, um, would like for staff to, one, as the mayor alluded, reach out to the Little League board, meet with them within the next month or less. Two, bring back to council something, something that we can see, touch and feel with respect to Saratoga. Now, that's not to say that all the other parks are of insignificance, no. But the public demand for that field is high and that's why even on your graphic, it is the highest used and the most, I'm sorry, Alma Hoffman is.
Number two though.
Saratoga is the second, I'm sorry. And the reason why those are is because, one, everyone knows Alma Hoffman is Shark Park and it's so centrally located and you got the skate bowl there and everything and that's where the concerts happen. So it's just a tradition that has been passed on from generation to generation that that's the go-to spot. Saratoga is the go-to spot where you play Little League and to a lesser extent, if you play, um, Golden Girls, you know, you play off of Benson. So that's just a given as to where those locations are and that's why those are widely used. So I would like to see something tangible with respect to Saratoga brought to us relatively soon, please. But let me ask just a few questions and I'll try to talk fast if I can. Moreno Vista, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that's currently a park. It's, as if I looked at the graphic, it looks like we're gonna be purchasing some properties there, correct?
I am not aware of that. We, I have, based on our GIES data and, and the information that we have, it is a city-owned park. Uh, but other conversations about purchasing land, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that question, Councilmember.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there is no indication in the master plan recommendation that we're acquiring part, property, or acquiring property. There are some homes adjacent to the park that are street frontage that we would ultimately like to acquire down the road to expand the size of the park, but that's down the road. Um, I also want to address the Saratoga Park issue. It isn't that nothing is being done in relation to Saratoga Park, Saratoga Park. This company has presented a parks master plan. They're not an architectural firm. They don't do design. But in any event, staff has been working on the environmental review for Saratoga Park, which has to be done first before we can make the kind of major modifications to the park that city council would like to see. So that environmental review process has been occurring during the course of the last year since council gave direction that we, uh, look at upgrading Saratoga Park. When that environmental review is completed, it'll come before the city council and then we'll emerge that with the recommendations in the master plan and with the recommendations of a architect that we will bring back to you, asking for your authorization to start designing all of the different elements of Saratoga Park based on the results of the environmental impact report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Some general comments. In one of the slides, I noticed one of the stickum notes that's in the picture, it says amphitheater. And yes, I think because we have Clermont to our west and Ontario to our east, both with amphitheater type stages and they utilize those, um, I, I, perhaps we uh, should have one more in the northern part of the city or this, again, centrally located. Back when we used to have the barbecue pits here at Shark Park. Did we not have a little stage too? I think it was taken out, if I'm not mistaken? No? Okay. I thought we had a flat, um, riser of some kind.
There was a stage in the patio area.
Okay, that's what I remember.
And then we have the expansion of the weight room and things, so that was removed.
If we could look at a soccer field of some kind, the Montclair families who enroll their kids in soccer, they're at a disadvantage because, as is the Little League, there is a certain degree of expectation that fields are reciprocated in their usage. And if you're gonna participate in a league, you gotta have a comparable field so you can rotate and you can have, you can host games as opposed to just visiting. So Montclair is at a disadvantage because we don't have a designated soccer field. And I know that as our population increases and we're a predominantly Hispanic community where soccer is the number one sport of choice, we need to accommodate that as opposed to them going outside to maybe off of, uh, I think El Camino Elementary is where, or actually it's Anthony Munoz, that, that area.
Anthony Munoz, yeah.
And then that even, we'll touch on the aquatics issue. They have a pool there. When my colleague to my right, Mr. Rue, was mentioning the aquatics issue, why not look at Anthony Munoz to see if we can do a joint shared agreement to utilize that pool? Uh, unless we use Montclair High's pool and do some, implement a new program there. And of course, I always hear from now because it's becoming more and more popular, is that folks do want a dog park. And, um, I, I think we've had that discussion with respect to a possible development in the north. But, um, I, I, I think that needs to be entertained, at least one in the city. I will say though, just a general caution that I have with respect to new parks. One, if there's existing private property, I don't like the property owner to feel that they're obliged or obligated or pressured into giving up their land for a park. Because I just don't think that that's fair. But I am always concerned about an element of crime. You mentioned the San Antonio, um, Trail. And right away I looked at the 10 freeway and that trail. And of course, there's a proposal to go underneath it and I think of crime because whatever out of sight, out of mind, you're gonna have activity happen. But at all these parks, you will have a level of, of something that shouldn't be happening, happening. But Sunset Park has hit pretty hard right now because a lot of those residents on Amherst call me and tell me about drug use and sexual use stuff floating around. It's ridiculous and it ruins their quality of life. So if we're gonna implement new parks, we gotta look at the crime element and how to curb it, lighting and whatnot. But why are bathrooms listed as amenities? They should be an automatic thing at every park. I, I just, it, it just eludes me that it's looked at as an amenity. It should be a given. Um, I'm, I'm gonna be quiet for now because my mind is slipping me as with respect to what else I wanted to say, but thank you for your time.
That was a great comment. Thank you, Councilmember.
Johnson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Jacob, and to the entire KTUA team for all of the work that you've done over the last year. Um, it seems like it's been an exhaustive effort as you considered every possible scenario. So I appreciate you for that. Um, I do have one, a statement I think is more for staff than for you. And, and it's about the San Antonio Creek Trail. I'm very excited to see the improvements that are going to happen there, but however recently I've been hearing from some of the residents who, in the portions of the trail that have residents on both sides of the wash, there are some serious complaints about people breaking into their property. And one person told me the other day, I was talking to him and he said that, uh, he, in the last six months, they've broken into his, his house three times because they go over the back wall. So um, the consideration, the thing that I would like for staff to consider is those areas that are more dense have less amenities. So we've talked about exercise equipment on the trail and benches and such. But maybe in the areas that are more dense, we have less of those kinds of amenities. So we had, there's less reason for people to hang out there and in, in consideration of the properties that have there. So that's the only concern I had about your report. The rest of it is fabulous to me. Um, I am a bit concerned about how we're, if we don't take action, then we're, we're not gonna meet our density targets. So I'm glad that you've pointed that out to us and we've got some work to do over the next few years. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I might've told you before, but I want to tell you again, thank you so much for all of the effort you've put into the community engagement portion of this project. The pop-ups and the workshops are fantastic and, and I think what's most important is that we are giving our community what they want. And one of the things that I have heard over and over is, you know, we have too many warehouses, too many buildings, not enough recreation. And it's just fact, you know, everyone in, in the area in Southern California deals with it because that's just the way that our cities are and the fact that we're targeting it is very important. I have noticed that with the implementation of the skate park and the youth center, we have children that are engaging in positive recreation. I, I think personally that any amount of money that we can put into our parks and and providing that recreation to our residents is going to really benefit our community. We're gonna have children that have places to go that might not otherwise be able to access our existing parks because transportation might be a factor. So in those areas, particularly, you know, we have people from the southern part of Montclair that feel like they're being neglected. We need the cultural elements. I'm very excited that you mentioned the cultural art, public art. I think those are going to be very important for our residents. In places that we do have large amounts of warehouses or businesses, we need to have just as many parks. As far as any risk that would come with, uh, an aquatic area, I agree, you know, that's the first thing on my mind is the risk. But I would think the same thing of the skate park. And that seems to have been wildly success, successful in our city. I think that giving our seniors more, um, opportunity to get out and exercise would be fantastic. They really enjoy the, the program at the mall and having more places for them to go is always a good thing. I don't believe that crime will multiply just because we have more parks. I think that there may be more pockets for, um, people to spread out into, but I think crime will relatively stay the same. And if, if nothing else, it, it may even decrease because we are encouraging our, our students and our, our youth to engage in positive recreation. So again, thank you so much for everything that you've done and for including us and for making sure that we're up to speed on what's going on and what the residents are saying. And the fact that you have been able to run with the San Antonio Creek Trail and, and figure out a way for the parks to cooperate with that project to make something even more beautiful is, um, really astonishing because I know you've put a lot of work and effort in the last couple of years into this project. So thank you both.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Uh, do we members in the public that wish to speak? Andrew, anybody who wants to speak? Nobody? Nope. Nobody want to speak? You guys? Come on up. Come on up. I'll give you two minutes.
Hi, um, I just wanted to agree with.
I'm sorry, your name, please?
Annette Brunsky.
I know Annette Brunsky.
Yeah, hey. Uh, I also agree with you that instead of more parks, we need to work on the parks that we have. We've got a, our park, I live right next door to, has, needs some work to be done to it. And I know some of the other parks, I mean, I didn't know about Saratoga, but I looked it up and I remember my kids playing on that field also. And yeah, that could, that could definitely use some work also. But I'm just saying that we need to put more money into the parks that we have, I think. Okay? I mean, I love your ideas and stuff, but our parks need a lot of work. We're hoping, and I never, we never got the opportunity to speak on, um, what we I know you had some sort of a poll or something, but we never, I never got that opportunity. I don't, I don't know where that was presented, but um, I didn't get to participate in any poll, um, on what we were hoping to have into our park. I just, you know, sometimes contact our mayor and, uh, poor mayor, he gets to hear my complaints. But, um, yeah, I've never been able to participate in a poll, but we at our park, our small little park, we would just like to have, you know, a walking area around the perimeter. Our park has been used and abused by the freeway people. I live at the top of, uh, by the 10 freeway. So it's been abused by all of the SBCTA, um, projects that have been going on. There's just, you know, piles, I mean, just pools of, of water that is just there. Um, they don't maintain the park as they used to. Um, the grass grows real high. What else, ladies? Trash. Oh my God, the trash. We've got two trash barrels that are about this big, which is a good size, but the container inside is only this big. So the trash, when people use the trash, they, they, they put it in bags and they lay them all around the trash can. I've got pictures. It's just, it's, it's just a mess. So we need more trash barrels there. Um, we need, like I said, the walking area with some, some lights so that, you know, crime isn't happening. isn't happening because we have, yeah, for safety reasons, because we have homeless people that are hanging out there and it's not lit up and the gates don't close anymore. So, they're going into the park, you know, and they're sleeping there and we, there's not a bathroom, so who knows where they're going to the bathroom, but, you know, we live like right next door to this park and, you know, this is, this is the stuff that, like, that we just, we just want to see. Yeah, yeah, so, I think that's, what else? What else, anything? I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm going to come back to me and, you know, I kind of wish, I kind of wish, my, my dream has always been to build like Yellow Park in Montclair a long time ago and I realized that Yellow Park in Chino has all these amenities there, has the softball fields, aquatics, the batting cages, soccer fields and all that. And, no, we don't have land to build something like that here in Montclair and what we have is our existing park plus we're going to add another park on, on Holt. So, what I'm going to say this, our parks in Montclair have probably have been barely touched for the last, I've been here 26 years in the council, and the only park that really has got the intention improvements will be Alma Hoffman Park. I think the rest of the parks have pretty much remained the same. We have, Alma Hoffman Park is a very active park as we all know, so is Saratoga, those are probably the two most active parks we have in Montclair. And we have other parks like Mon, Moreno Vista Park is one example, doesn't get used at all, there's no amenities there. And probably our, our other parks in Montclair, perhaps MacArthur, it seems like it gets a little more used, but some of our parks get used a lot less compared to others. So, I think, I think one of the things we got to do is, based on this survey, we've, we've come up here, what amenities, not only the public want, but what amenities can we put in these parks to make these parks more usable by the Montclair community and by Montclair youth? And the second thing that's been brought up is that some of our parks are outdated and Saratoga's one of them and we got to get going and conduct the improvements and prioritize those improvements to the parks and the other one, you know, obviously, safety, the, the lighting, those other issues too to deal with. So, this report, it will be coming out, when do you expect the, the draft to be, to be out on this report? And then I believe the report will include recommendations, you're going to prioritize, I mean, Elvis will sit up here and decide, you know, dog park, you know, or these other amenities. I believe that's coming to us at a later date. And then, and then we got to get going on Saratoga, we got to get, we got to figure this whole thing with the baseball fields. That's, that's a high priority, get going immediately. One of the things I will say about this is every park in Montclair should have a playground equipment area, some don't. The other thing I will say at Sunset Park, I know we used, we bought a property on Kingsley, there was a house there and we made this area much bigger, but I always felt that that lawn, that sunset out there facing Kingsley is a soccer field, should be a soccer field. Doesn't mean we part of the AOISO, but perhaps the community would like to use that for soccer or for whatever recreation. We'll see what your report comes out of that too as far as what can go in Sunset Park. So, again, I think, again, I hear Ed, am I correct, this will come back again with us, the final report, we'll go through it, we'll prioritize, we'll figure out which improvements we think are a high priority, we're going to get going on the, the baseball fields and then we'll figure out how much money we have to do all this.
Yes, that is correct. This is the master plan that produces the ideas as to what the public would like to see at the parks, which is why design hasn't been implemented yet because we needed to determine what it is exactly the public wanted to see. Now, we'll take this tool and we will bring back to you a firm that will do design at the various parks incorporating these various ideas. We already did know that there was a desire for a walking trail at MacArthur Park, so that is already in the back of staff's mind, that that would be one of the features that would be added to that particular park. This report has generated the idea that restrooms are a, a type of facility needed at the parks. As councilmembers do know, most of the parks at one time had restrooms, but the restrooms just were vandalized over and over and over again and the parks, the restrooms at the various parks were just shut down because of all of that vandalism. We'll continue to try and address that issue going forward, but I think in relation to the crime issue, the objective here is that if you bring more people to the parks, which is our purpose, then the parks will experience less crime because more people deters crime. Crime at parks generally is a result of lack of other people observing individuals engaging in criminal activities. So, we think that by implementing the activities and the recommendations contained in the master plan and then the design work that would be brought forward to the city council for consideration at the various parks, that that will have a positive impact on that particular issue as well, as well as addressing all the issues, Mr. Mayor, that you just discussed about making improvements to each of the parks in Montclair. It was our intent that that would be our priority, making improvements to the parks as opposed to expanding the size of the parks at this point in time, except for the ongoing effort to make certain that San Antonio Creek Trail Park becomes a reality for the community, which is obviously the number-one project that residents would like to see. I think that had the highest bar.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez, you have something real short?
Yeah, just a quick question, who is the determining authority, the agency or the standard in determining which, I mean, who tells municipality that they are at deficit or surplus with respect to acreage in parks? Because when you said that, Fontana has over 50 parks, now granted, Fontana's a lot, much larger than good old Montclair, but they have over 50 parks in Fontana and I think, I teased their councilmembers, they're friends of mine, I say, "Man, you guys are just going to have parks and no residents after, you know, you guys are just leveling things." But then again, they're building warehouses like crazy. So, who, who's the authority?
Yeah, great question. So, guidelines are established by the NRPA, the National Recreation and Parks Association. It's across the whole country, but they do break it up, councilmember, into categories by size of city, just to be apples to apples. It's unfair for a city like Montclair to be compared to a city like Ontario.
Right.
So, they do have subcategories and in our analysis, we, we compare it to, as best to our ability to other cities of similar demographics and size.
That's good, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So, Ed, you're, you're okay on directions then? All right. Okay, we adjourn.